Councilmember Castaneda.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Here.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwin.
Here.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice required of the open hearing has been complied with and satisfied. Now, the annual notice which gives sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all four hearings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the signature as being placed on the appropriate voting board in C form and has been transmitted to the city newspaper for the city of New Brunswick to keep the home in this meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, I just want to wish you a happy Independence Day tomorrow, and I think that is a good way and a good moment to reflect on the values that founded these United States, which are freedom, equality, and the pursuit of happiness. As we celebrate with cake, these fireworks, and with the family, let us remember that now more than ever, we need to continue working towards realizing these ideals to ensure a better future for all. Thank you.
Move on. Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence that you've addressed to the other three departments?
Yes, Council President, correspondence received by the City Board's office was forwarded to the corporate department for further action.
Thank you.
Next, we have the open hearing. Council President, this is the fixed time for the public hearing on the 2024 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the governing body on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, was advertised as required by law on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, together with notice of hearing for this time. Current copies have been made available to the public during the past week and is available on our city website.
Anyone who has no secure copy of the budget may consult now. At this time, I would ask that there be resolution zero seven to number zero zero eight by the title of the motion.
Whereas NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eight, as amended, provides that the budget as advertised shall be read in full at the public hearing, or that it may be read by its title only if, one, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing and at the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget, A, shall be made available for public inspection, and B, shall be made available for each person upon request. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of New Brunswick that it is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eight, as amended, set forth in subsections one A and one B have been met, and therefore, the budget of the year two thousand twenty-four shall be read by title only.
We are preparing to open the public hearing on the resolution regarding the reading of the budget by title only. You have up to five minutes. Any person wishes to come up? You have one time off. Please come up. If you wish to speak of this resolution only. This is to read the budget by title only.
Yeah, Charlie Cradville, Brunswick and Brunswick. Today, I just want to confirm there'll be an opportunity to find out on the actual budget in a moment.
Yes.
So now this opportunity.
Minutes. Seconds.
I offer the verbal resolution of this option.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, before opening this hearing, uh, open the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four municipal budget, before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person decided to prepare, may consult. You have up to five minutes per person, one time off. You need to address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, there will be referred to the members of the governing board or municipal officials. Questions will be confined solely to the municipal budget because school or county matters are not focus subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. So before I open the hearing, I would like to ask Mr. Johnnie Seabody for some highlights, please.
Charlie Cradville, my pleasure. Also, for your benefit, Richard Lawr, our CFO, is here, along with our order, Justin Combe, and the Zavita from Central Client. The proposed budget for two thousand twenty-four has been submitted with one hundred and eleven million dollars, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars in total expenditures, supported by a levy of thirty-nine million, seven hundred and three thousand dollars. The budget maintains all of our regular municipal services extended over the previous years. In addition, the budget calls for the hiring of thirteen police officers, three of whom will hit our streets this summer, and ten are slated to begin the academy in August. The outfitting of firefighters with additional safety equipment, expanded programming, and offerings for residents and recreation between center and senior center are a few items in the name of you. The budget also provides for four point five million dollar increase in healthcare insurance obligations, reflecting a return to pre-COVID healthcare costs for the cities, while also complying with all the appropriate levy and levy and appropriation taxes. In addition, meeting the city operational demands, this budget will continue to make investments that improve the infrastructure that our residents rely on and quality of life in our neighborhoods. Okay, thank you. Our park improvement program continues with startup construction on Liberty Square Park. Thank you for your attention. Will replace it be surfacing a hard surface of plain, plain courts, including new pit wall courts, and the installation of newly purchased playground equipment in Simplex Avenue, Quicken Avenue, Joyce Hill, Alec Baker, Alice Rock Gold, and Casa Parks. Plans also include to a complete renovation of Alice Baker Park, as we await, as we've been awarded a one point nine million dollar grid acre grant, and construction will begin within two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. As steward of the city's building and facilities, this year's projects include a surf renovation of the iconic brick facade of Engine Five on Barkley Street, and interior improvements and repairs to the pre-public library, including the elevator and the HVAC system. In addition, in all that we have going on above ground, the city will be just as active underground, replacing over three miles of water mains in areas and around Rutherford Village, Lee Avenue, Sedan Street, Jersey Avenue, College Avenue, Richmond Street, Albany Street, Vernon Street, High Street, Jones Avenue, Paul Robinson Boulevard, Delvan Street, and Jersey Street. The roadways for each of these projects will be newly paved when completed. Other streets scheduled to repay this year include Lewis Courtland, Van Dyke, Brookside, Maple, Lawrence, Reed, Howard, Sanford, and Iron Square. With recent projected long-term shifts in temperature and weather patterns, new for the city budget this year is inclusion of the stormwater utility, intended to raise and direct funds to combat unprecedented flooding that threatens the lives and properties of our residents. The stormwater utility provides the means of developing a long-term stormwater capital improvement master plan, address repair needs, reduce litter, pollution in city waterways, and provide additional resources to address the impacts of flooding in private public property. The stormwater utility generates revenue to cover the cost of these services by placing a fee on public and private properties based on the amount of stormwater runoff that drains into the city's stormwater management systems. Historically, the payment for these expenses was drawn from property taxes on private property and not based on the actual stormwater runoff that a property generates and discharges. It is anticipated the utility will generate approximately one point five million dollars based on a modest rate for all property owners. Funds from the stormwater utility placed in its own enterprise fund that will restrict the use of these funds to only stormwater-related activities. This government body took action on that previously. We also continue to benefit from our revitalization efforts as recent development projects have realized an increase of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue, nearly a million in construction code fees, and forty-six point three million in total assessed valuation of taxable property in the city. A tax rate, a tax rate increase of three cents has been proposed for this budget, resulting in an annual increase of ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents for the average property owner, and an average property owner being defined at a property assessed at two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents. On behalf of the mayor and the entire administration, thank you for your review of this proposed budget, and as always, we look forward to a successful year.
Thank you, Mr. Mullrind. At this time, I'm willing to declare the public hearing open. Anybody who wishes to address the council of the twenty-twenty-four municipal budget through the platform, size three, if you have one time off, five minutes.
Anything, Charlie Cradville, Brunswick and Brunswick. Today, I'll start on sheet four. Wanted to ask about the surplus from the sewer utility. It looks like two point five million for the coming year. Can you tell me what percentage that represents of the revenue that Nancy brings in?
Mr. Mullrind.
Mr. Cradville, seeking a calculation, I would have to take my calculator, calculate the percentage, but allowance of surplus is something that's permitted through our regular processes, but would the team want to add anything to that? Is there a maximum allowed? Capital? There is an obligation of cap. The city submits itself to a review process, and the DCA reviews all of these items to be properly appropriated, and they have approved thus for adoption based on those purposes.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll move on to page four A. So first item here is the payment in lieu of taxes presumably for a bunch of different projects. I wanted to ask if you happen to have the figure handy of what the full tax payment would have been if these were not exempted? I tend to not have that number handy. Okay, that would be as a user-friendly budget, am I correct? Yes. And is that available on the website or not yet?
Do we have that on the website?
It will be posted for the adopted budget. The next line is the parking authorities' payment in lieu of taxes. Just wanted to confirm, are they paid up for all their twenty-twenty pilot when they had to not pay in full? The parking authorities' current on their payments, it's a multi-year payment schedule. Mr. Mullrind, do you recall how many more payments left? I don't know, but I know there are today on their monthly payments.
So they haven't complied?
Yes, yes. Right, and does this figure include the additional for the missed payments in two thousand twenty? Yes. Okay. Thanks. I'll move on to page twelve, sheet twelve. See a pretty big increase in the salaries and wages for the office of the mayor. Wanted to ask what that represents. Is there going to be additional staff? Run on, have they already been run on?
We expect to have any additional staff at the mayor's office?
No, I think Mr. Cradville will remember that this is reflective of full year.
Full year, full salary.
Oh, so the mayor's raise is what's reflected there, okay. Move on to fifteen A. See a big drop in the salaries and wages for the Division of Street Services. It looks like the city spent six hundred and thirty-nine thousand for two thousand twenty-three, but you're only budgeting two hundred and seventy thousand for two thousand twenty-four. Why is that? I'll let Mr. Mullrind start, and then I'll finish up.
Yeah, a lot of work to do with any kind of salary wage changes, and the budget could have, could be reallocation of some duties to the different utilities and different staffing changes that happen in the, within the year, so that's what most of those changes result in.
So what you're saying is sometimes the water utility picks up the tab for street work and that's. That's enough, that's no, I'm not saying that, so it's taking up the tab. Mr. Mullrind is suggesting is that we look at street services and the work that utilities do, not these, these labor forces are not silos, they, they share similar tasks, so there's an economy of scale, and as you'll see from the aggressive underground utility work that we've been doing in this budget, folks who are in these street services are very engaged in those areas, and so they're just appropriate to move the cost where they have to. I think that's all I have on the budgets, and I think.
I mean, it's for the political issues to the council on the municipal budget.
Yes, I know, Mark, that's where I'm gonna continue with fifteen A. Mr. Cradville was speaking with the salary and wages due to where I see this is under the Department of Public Works, due to where I'm gonna say as well, that's a pretty deep cut, make that down, due to where I would like to ask, due to where since this is salary and wages, due to where I know a lot of workers have quit, resigned from the city of New Brunswick for not being paid enough, and due to where I see that workers have been hired, where they're, they're, they're not really put in, in the union, getting, getting full coverage, so does that have anything to do with it, due to where, what, almost, you might say, not labor work, due to where some of the new workers that's been hired?
Council President, I think this more would be happy to know that the number here represented vacancies and filled positions, so the change here is, does not reflect who showed up to work today, it's the total cost of the operations. And I think just to further provide a detail that may be important to her, every new hire has a time before they can be part of the union, and I think that may be what she does.
Well, like I said, after we're seeing so many workers quitting, due to where, like I said, the city refuses to pay, to pay enough money to even afford to live in New Brunswick. It's not like you didn't hear that, but I still say that's a pretty drop, and one thing due to where I will speak on the, especially the Department of Public Works, due to where with the extra duty when it's time, due to where, what, does the mayor give the workers extra duty, due to where, in the rain, with cleaning the drainages, this is a very important situation, due to where, well, after seeing, what, your street was another flash flood, how did the drains were clogged in certain areas, due to where, what? Just because it's at nighttime, where, what, you know a storm, like a big thunderstorm is coming, please, make sure you keep saying we're gonna have a storm wash thing, due to where I suggest is you start making sure that a lot of these drains are clean, due to where I wasn't, I wasn't here Sunday, I was on the train coming back from New York with an afternoon, to where to see, wow, like I said, how the flash flooding happened, and then, wow, after removing all the garbage that was in the drains, the sewage, where please, I think the mayor should, uh, with, I see that you do have plenty of money, I feel that it's for other people's damage with their houses and in front of their belongings, what's being lost, due to where I just see two cars wrecked again, where with flash flooding on your street, due to where what had to be told away, due to where, please, I gave you head, I gave you heads up already, wow, when before you started the outdoor dining, wow, are we, is, we're gonna have many flooding, flooding situations, so like I said, I think you have the money, due to where, please, let's start doing the right thing to make sure people shouldn't have to pay a price. I know you can't control mother nature, but if you understand what I'm saying, if, like I said, the drains are clean, where it will cause, that, that, it won't cause as much flooding if the water's ever, able to go down into the drains. Then also my, uh, due to where the other situation, that was, uh, with, with the sewage, due to where I'm, I'm not really sure, I didn't hear properly, but due to where, was that four, four, around sheet four, but my question is, wow, it did spike on the water and the sewage, but mainly it's the sewage that's costing more than the water. I'm like, wow, only one person in the household home, what, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for a water bill, what, it hasn't been spiked up, due to where, what, everything is up with the work being done? Where I've been speaking to the water, the water department, and even asking questions, what, I don't drink the water, I, 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 I don't cook with the water, due to where, what, basically all I do is with the shower with it, and like I said, the way I was born and raised, like my grandmother used to tell me, hey, don't come over here and run up my water bill with flushing the toilet every time, just because I'm, like, like I said, as a little kid, you just flush every time you urinate. I respect, if you understand what I'm saying, the way I was born and raised, that time due to where, what, I'm the only one in the house, I'm not gonna flush the toilet every time, what, I'm just get urinating, but I only see a huge spike in the water, due to where, wow, New Brunswick's water is a piece of crap.
Anybody else need to address the council?
I, I just put a red letter, I give you water, and I cook with the water.
Yes.
Hi, it's only five, four, three, seven, street. I want to talk about the, uh, the, uh, stormwater utility. Personally, I think it's excellent, that, that investment is certainly something that we sorely need, wondering here a little bit more of the reasoning behind the revenue generation in terms of, um, properties we are in charge, based on how much the water runoff is produced by those properties. Is that with the intention that the higher cost to properties that have a lot of runoff, which result in some behavioral change or, or change on the property owner's side that would have them produce less runoff? Is that the goal, or is that not necessarily my interest in public?
So in any type of utility being set in, it's a matter of equity, if fees are based on usage, that's different than taxation in traditional way. So while what I'm hearing seems a little more punitive to change behavior, the intention is to be able to strike a rate that's equitable for those who are discharging stormwater into a storm sewer based on how much they discharge. And there's no metering in this process, unlike we're used to with water and sewer, et cetera. So the fee is, is based on how much stormwater runoff, and if the property is able to maintain that stormwater and, and use the system at a minimal level, then they pay a minimal charge. No one is truly disconnected using the storm sewer, because all the water actually ends up there.
And how is that to be measured in terms of some blood property to the next, how much water is running off it, if it seemed like a difficult thing to measure?
It's called a ERU.
Equivalent, right?
Yes, it's a equivalent, equivalent, residential unit, and the ERU uses mapping technology to look at how impervious the matter of surface area is, and then apply a formula to that impervious part of the, of the property to generate a cost factor, and that cost factor then put into the overall target and budget of the stormwater utility, which is targeting seven million dollars of capital fruence to offer stormwater relief in the city in its six-year capital plan. Plus also, that money goes towards the maintenance of the items regarding storm. It is an incredible, magnificent process to watch as our OEM, police buyer, and DBW can prepare for every storm and clear out all those breaks, and that's all part of our stormwater preparation, and this has been borne on the taxpayers up until this point, with stormwater utility now, those operations can be properly funded. Any questions?
Thank you. And so just to clarify, what, what you're saying is that the, um, the judgment of how much runoff is produced by each property is based on modeling for how much we can predict will be produced by each property, not an actual real-life measurement of how much?
No, it's based on what impervious coverage is. That's, that's an actual, it's an actual measure.
Right, right, and that the actual measure is the amount of impervious surface. So, which is acting as a proxy for measuring the amount of stormwater that will be running off of that property, is that correct?
If you say so, but that's, that's not what the statute permits. Statute permits the, the measurement of impervious surface and calculation.
Okay. I, I think we're saying the same thing without actually literally saying the same thing, but I think we understand each other. Um, it would seem to me, you know, just in terms of the, the long-term goal of this, right, is to manage stormwater better because we're gonna have more extreme conditions in the future, and ideally, we would not just be managing the problem as it gets worse and worse, we would be trying to take active steps to reduce the factors that are contributing to the problem. If impervious surfaces are the number contributor, which I, I'm sure that that's the case, it seems like it would also be smart to have some public education about reducing impervious surfaces on private property, since, you know, that's something, of course, would be great for, uh, there'd be more permeable surfaces implemented in public spaces, but a lot of the actual land is private property, and even if not in a punitive way, it does seem like that would be hopeful towards the long-term goal.
And I'm pretty sure that the ones that stormwater, that's some of the things that will be part of, right? Education, not just to say, okay, this is what's gonna happen, but educate the public and, and we might start with the children, because they're the future, they need to start understanding so from now, so, um, I'm pretty sure they will do that. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Council President, I think, yes, we discuss complete additional public education as part of our MS four permit by CP, PHD, and also do stormwater education currently.
Thank you. So at this time, the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four municipal budget is now closed, serving up for individuals, applicants, and the entertaining motion to close.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Now, I will ask that there to be resolution zero seven two four zero zero B, to approve amendments for the city of New Brunswick twenty-four budget.
City of New Brunswick. Resolution to amend the budget by the municipal council, whereas the local municipal budget of the year two thousand twenty-four was approved on the third of July, two thousand twenty-four, and whereas it is desired to amend instead of the budget now, therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of the two thousand twenty-four be made. Total Section D, shared service agreements, offset with appropriations, from four million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents, to four million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Total Section F, special items of general revenue, anticipated with prior grant consent of the Director of Local Government Services, public and private revenues, from two million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, to five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. For total general revenues, one hundred and eleven million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, to one hundred and fourteen million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Total inter-local municipal service agreements, from four million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-nine cents, to four million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Total public and private programs, offset by revenues, from two million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, to five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Total general appropriations, one hundred and eleven million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents, to one hundred and fourteen million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Be it further resolved that the two certified, that two certified copies of this resolution be filed in the Office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for his certification of the two thousand twenty-four local municipal budget, so anywhere.
At this time, we are preparing to open the public hearing on the resolution regarding amendments of city of New Brunswick twenty-two budget only. You have up to five, up to five minutes, one time off. Any member of the public wish to speak on this resolution through sheet four? Seconds.
I'm out with the foregoing resolution of the adopted.
Second. Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Madam President, please read section two of resolution zero seven two four zero zero C to approve the city of New Brunswick twenty-four budget.
Yes, Madam President. Resolution R dash zero seven two four zero zero C. Be it further resolved by the council members of the city of New Brunswick, County of Middlesex, that the budget herein before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as a for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amounts of A) $39,702,257.48 for municipal purposes and B) $1,244,451 for school purposes in a Type 1 school district only, NJSA 18A:92 to be raised by taxation; D) $360,569.75 for open space recreation, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy; and F) $1,434,308.94 for minimum library tax. It is hereby certified that within the budget is a true copy of the budget finally adopted by resolution of the governing body on the 3rd of July 2024. It is further certified that each item of revenue and appropriations is set forth in the same amount and by the same title as appeared in the 2024 approved budget and all amendments thereto, if any, which have been previously approved by the Director of Local Government Services, certified by me this 3rd date of July 2024.
We contain the person.
I offer the foregoing resolution.
Second.
I read the adopted 2024 charter.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor-Lowry?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now, we have a resolution to set the tax rate for border education for 2024. We are prepared to open the public hearing on the resolution set the tax rate for border education for the border education for 2024. You have up to five minutes to come up. Does any member of the public have any comments on this particular resolution? You have five minutes. See none?
I offer the foregoing resolution of the adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor-Lowry?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Very sociable, um, when they were giving us the highlights. Appreciate it. Never a good, very hard process, but very true. Thank you. At this time, we have ordinance, ordinance for discussion of several reasons. We have ordinance 062404 and ordinance 1, and supplement the device in our ordinance of the City of New Brunswick that's building construction. Mr. Dominguez, can you give, you know, a brief explanation of this one?
Charlie, thank you, Council President. So, the state adopted a law enabling municipalities and setting the parameters for the ability to charge and require registration for foreclosed properties. Prior to that, they had enabled vacant and abandoned properties to be registered. They have now extended that to foreclosed properties and set a fee structure for it. This would allow the city to include that in its ordinance and allow us to begin forcing foreclosed properties to be registered and pay a registration fee.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments on these particular ordinance? We are preparing to open the floor for public hearing on this ordinance only. You have up to five minutes. The person one time off. Any members of the public, please?
Yes, good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. I wanted to ask about the existing properties on this list. Is there a number of current vacant properties officially?
Mr. Dominguez, do you have that reservation?
I think there's about six.
All right. Probably a lot more than that in reality. Does the city anticipate this ordinance is going to lead to a significant increase in the number of properties on the list? Is there any estimate of how many might be eligible or goal that you have for how many to get?
Dominguez.
There, I think by state law, entities that initiate foreclosure proceedings have to send some kind of notice to the municipality. We get them in drips and drabs, but I imagine it's on the order of dozens a year.
Thank you.
Okay. And they would all be added? Is that, that's how it works? If it's foreclosed, they're supposed to join the list?
To register.
Yeah, they'll have to register. They don't become vacant or abandoned statutorily. That's a different thing, although foreclosed properties are sort of the pipeline there. But they will be part of the broader list that this ordinance and state law encompasses.
Thanks, William.
Any other on these particular ordinance?
I have one quick question about the list. So, would this be of your list, would this be on a city page or a certain place that we will be able to see this? City page or what would it be under?
If we're seeing to have a list of vacant properties or possession properties on the road cycle.
We'll look into it historically. We've had concerns about it encouraging behavior from speculators and the like, but we'll explore if we think it's appropriate to do so.
Thank you. Well, the only way I say due to where I think it'll be a good idea, I see what you're saying due to where, what you listed, but honestly, due to I see boarded up houses where all these squatters are going regardless. So, it's not like it's not nothing we'll be seeing anyway, but I would have to say due to where, honestly, I will be looking into real estate as well and then due to where, that's my main reason, due to where I would like to know where I can check this out, due to where it'd be better to get the out there. So, like I said, we can avoid vacant houses due to where, what, we have enough squatters breaking into the houses too much of it and what, I hear you project say they're going to try to do something, but please, honestly, it's just getting worse and worse.
Anything else?
But like I said, thank you. I would like to see it. Thank you.
Any other? Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor-Lowry?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
We have ordinance 062405, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the device in our ordinance of the City of New Brunswick that's in traffic, split the 29th time limits parking. This is in reference to parking due to expansion, Union Street, and Easton Avenue. Mr. Dominguez, please add a brief explanation of this.
Thank you, Council President. As part of the general planning work that we do at the city, we are looking at different areas and how they change and how parking impacts them and what impacts parking meters could have a potential benefit there for controlling the turnover of parking. Currently, we see these areas as ripe for the installation of parking meters. Now, I'm going to start with Union Street. Union Street, half of Union Street, the side with the yard, is already metered all the way up. So, the opposite side of the street has no meters and it's completely uncontrolled. It's not permanent parking. It's nothing. It is a highly congested for parking area. There's no turnover on vehicles and this would allow there to be opportunity for vehicles to turn over for commuters and other students and other people who are coming to that area. And splits it fairly on both sides of the street. On Easton Avenue, this would, on the southwest side, so that's the side of Hansel and Gretel and Boylan Funeral Home, just on that side, it would expand from Mine Street to Portland Street for expanded parking meters. That's three blocks. The reason is that those are highly jammed up blocks with carton. There's a lot of double parking from the DoorDash drivers and the like or just regular folks and they're blocking, they're creating awkward turns, appropriate turnover and ideal pricing, which should hold. Ideally, you want to target that there's always one space open on a block. Ideal parking meters get you one open space always on a block. Would that would avoid that grief and those problems that we have with that issue. The two blocks that are closest to downtown are the primary offenders, but if you do not include the third block, which is so-so, it would create sort of awkward island. Instead, by having all three, it's a continuous corridor because after Portland Street along the hospital, it's also metered. On the opposite side, we have some very awkwardly shaped blocks. They're triangular, they have odd angles, there's a lot of driveways. And if we stick, I think they're 20 or 21 or 23 feet, the parking spaces for the meters, if we stick them there and we stick them firmly within those boxes, it'll be very awkward and we may actually net less parking spaces on that side by virtue of not being able to fit that many boxes between, you know, intersections and parking spaces and driveways. And so, that's sort of the high and low of the problem.
Thank you. Any other, my fellow councilmembers? Any questions? Any comments on this? Any member of the public just to address the council? You have five minutes, one time off.
Good evening, Council, Charlie Cradaville. I appreciate the explanation on this one, but I have to ask that the planning process include residents or businesses that are on these affected blocks?
Mr. Dominguez?
No, we're exploring where there's congestion in terms of parking turnover and using the meters as a method of stabilizing that as so many other cities have done.
Thank you.
Right, I get it. I just think that planning is always better when the people who are going to be affected are included from the beginning and don't just walk outside and find out that their situation has changed, especially for some of the businesses that have been there for a long time. Some of them may like this. Some of them might have come out tonight to support it, but we don't know if we didn't proactively connected them and let them know what is being planned for their community. So, I think certainly it would be wise to do that and encourage you to do that on this one end in the future. There's going to be big changes like this.
Any other in the public? See none?
Motion? Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor-Lowry?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Then we have ordinance 062406, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the device in our ordinance of the City of New Brunswick that's of eight health and safety chapter, eight, and eight tree preservation requirements. This is in reference to tree preservation. Mr. Dominguez?
Yes, I'll be short of this time. Thank you, Council President. As part of the city applying and getting its MS4 permit, which is stormwater related permit, we are required to have a tree preservation ordinance. The good news is we have one already, so we were able to send it to the person that the DEP designated to vet the ordinance. They found that our ordinance was mostly compliant. They just felt that we had a list of exemptions and one of the exemptions was cemeteries and they said we couldn't exempt cemeteries, but that we could charge them at a lower rate for reforestation. And so, we, instead of exempting them, we have moved them into a different section and are allowing them to pay for reforestation or rates of reforestation at one-third of other projects.
Thank you. Any other that probably wishes to address the council on use ordinance only? You have up to five minutes.
So, basically, what I'm understanding that these trees are, that was supposed to be going towards the cemetery? And what, well, because I'm not, I'm not understanding.
If I may?
Yes.
Certainly. So, this ordinance regulates who can cut down a tree, what they have to do if they cut down a tree on your property. There are certain rules and exemptions and sometimes you have to either plant new trees or sometimes you have to pay a large amount that goes into the city's tree trust fund for the city to plant the trees to offset the trees that you cut. Previously, cemeteries did not have to pay anything to cut down trees because they're sort of a unique land use and we didn't want to burden them. And so, now they cannot be exempted as per the representative from the DEP, but we were able to set a rate of a third so they would have to pay less into this fund or replace the trees at one-third of a rate. But it doesn't impact how many trees they have to plant or have or anything.
Okay, well, I'm glad you said that part due to, my main concern is for residents due to where your city trees, due to where you're letting them overgrow a certain amount due to where, and then you come after a resident due to where, once their roots start cracking the sidewalks, due to where it's the city's job to maintain your city trees. I feel due to where, wow, too many residents, wow, so many trees, even though they're beautiful, but out of the past two years, I've been saying, wow, it's time for you to start trimming your trees. While you can barely go through some streets walking underneath due to where they're not getting trimmed. And like I said, due to where I'm seeing several sidewalks being lifted up from the roots of your trees, due to where I feel at this moment, due to where as much wind as we've been getting before hurricane season really starts, I really say you should start taking the responsibility with these humongous trees that are bigger, two times bigger than a house it is. And maybe I will start saying over by towards Jones Avenue, due to where, what, we had a situation over there and then due to with the wiring where these Horizon and PSE and G, they did come out to cut some of the trees in certain areas, start trimming from away from the wires. But I, I really think a lot of these trees, due to where they need to be tested and cut down and then like I said, we start planting new trees, due to where I feel that the city just takes advantage of some residents and have them fool saying, wow, you have to pay for the damage to replace the sidewalk, but it's your tree roots. Why should the residents have to pay? So, please, like I said, I hope you do understand what I'm saying. Fees, maintain your trees. So, like I said, homeowners does not have to pay for your damage of what is causing to their property. And like I said, it's also being a new, as a situation with the tree roots going through the sewer lines, due to where messing up people's sewer lines with the roots growing in. Because honestly, my landlord had that situation about two years ago, due to where they came and run the snake through there and said, well, honestly, I didn't believe him, but I had to take all the pictures to show all the roots that were being pulled out of the sewer, even though that was from his tree in the backyard, but it still happens with city trees as well. So, please, maintain your trees.
Any other? Any other?
Yeah. Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. Similar question to the last one, were the owners and operators of any cemeteries in New Brunswick consulted about this change?
Dominguez?
They were not. This is where we have to move pretty quickly with this and we have to not exempt them, so there's not really much to discuss on the issue.
So, we tried. It was this state representative that was saying that we cannot exempt it. That's why we're sending this?
That's correct. The representative from DEP on this said we are not allowed to exempt users like cemeteries from this.
Yeah. To be clear, I'm not advocating for them being exempted. I'm actually a little surprised that they were to begin with and I guess I'm not clear on exactly why you landed on doing a one-third requirement and not just, you know, changing the exemption. If a cemetery, you know, destroys, gets rid of a tree, why shouldn't they have to replace it or pay for replacement? Or why should they have to pay a lower rate than everybody else who does it? I don't get it.
So, Mr. Dominguez, what was your rationale behind having the cemeteries?
So, cemeteries are important cultural and traditional items for people of all faiths and races. The city did not want to put an onerous burden on cemeteries to begin with. That's why they were exempted. And landing on a one-third so that it is a very minimal, if ever, impact since they're largely open fields already, felt like a fair way of complying with the state's law while not impacting the cemetery in a meaningful way.
Okay. I mean, I do think it would make sense to communicate, we have a handful in New Brunswick and, you know, maybe they would have an opinion that might have influenced this, but, you know, you don't know if you don't have, so that's my point. Thanks.
Anybody else? See none? Motion?
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor-Lowry?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes.
Now, we have resolutions, one to four, as I said, before the amendment has been approved. Any member of the, any member have any questions? Tell us some resolutions. Before we go, we have some questions. If you start.
Before we go, we have some questions, if you start. Captain Bloomberg, number 15, is, if you could talk a little bit about, this is to sell, some surplus items, if you could talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Council President, I think it's deemed surplus property, it belongs to the government, in this case, the police department, has to have a resolution accompanying it before it can be placed on our online auction platform.
Anybody else have a proposal they surplus that we are trying to sell?
If anybody's interested in filing cabinets, we have a lot of them. So.
Thank you. Mr. De La Cruz, number 21.
Yes, yes, Council President, this is a NJDOT local aid slash urban aid application. We apply for one or two every year. Specific to this year, we combined three roadways, which we are allowed. First one was Welton Street from Troop all the way to Joyce Kilmer. Welton, we felt was important because it services Lord Sterling School, it services the public library, it services Roosevelt School, and it also services Welton Street Park as well as the family courthouse. And that had a lot of strength in terms of servicing. We also included a portion of Harvest Street between Somerset Street and Hamilton Street, that's the area that goes up in the hill and bend, it's in poor condition. We include, also are doing some park improvement projects here, so we felt that restoring the road would be a good complement to that. And then additionally, the last item was we included the balance of Lee Avenue. Last year, we were awarded the road improvement projects for Lee Avenue from Loretto to Hell Street, which also covers the length that we're doing with Water Main and Sewer Main. In this case, we're going to extend the Water Main and Sewer Main a bit, so we wanted to apply for the balance of Lee Avenue to improve it, so we completely added this complete.
Thank you. And Mr. De La Cruz, number 38, if you could tell us about this former, I think it's a platform, professional services?
Yes, Council President, thank you very much. Tracer is an ERP platform, enterprise resource planning platform. In business, those are systems that run entire operations. Tracer is tailored to municipal and utilities usage. This is an example of our mayor, this council, and the administration's focus and their vision in streamlining processes in government and in utilities. In this system, since we're starting from scratch, the opportunity is there to put technology in place that will allow an efficient operation of the new utility.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, this time, any member of the public who just to address the council on the resolutions, you have, please come up, you have one time off, five minutes. And if you can help with indicating which resolution you are referring to.
Honestly, I am not sure if 14 and 24 are like a connection, due to where they're both, they both have to deal with land bank account, the water improvement, a little bit of tanks being replaced. So, so when will this be being done?
Well, this is to advertise, we're trying to see who would do the job.
Okay, so who will get the, the bid? Put a, put a bid in?
Yes.
Bid in to do the job.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, that's 14, okay. Well, okay, what is the difference, due to where, like I said, both of them are 14 and 24 are both based on land bank account, water improvement? So what is?
24 is something else, for municipality.
Yes, essentially, this is a change during the existing contract in place with the ground utilities to replace the water main and water bend, like, this is actually a water department, but this is a change order number two, to capture additional cost.
Your words are better.
That's, no, it's, number 14 is specific to the, but you are correct, Madam, Council President, number 14 is specific to the water tower itself, the tank that's elevated. Number 24 is related to the road work, the improvements in the water. Thank you.
Okay. So basically, for the, the road work improvements, basically replacing the pipelines, like they've been doing on the streets then? Oh, okay. All right, good, thank you.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville, once again. We'll start on page three, Resolution 12, can you tell me what's happening here? Why is the correction necessary?
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes, Madam President, when the resolution was passed, after the resolution was passed, we learned that the organization had to change your address, and that they were also incorporated to business as another company also. But these extra resolutions, it's just that we need to have updated name and address.
Okay, and so the city was not aware that this LLC was involved with Aquashore at the time that the decision was originally made, or just as a?
They informed us afterwards, after how they would like the resolution to reach.
Okay. May I ask if there were other bids, or was this the lowest?
I don't have that in front of me, but I can believe that was the only one that we received at the time.
Move on to page five. Data processing, a resolution 25, rejecting the bids and asking for another bidding process. Can you tell me what this, these systems are for, or these services are for?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Everywhere we find inefficiencies in the processes that we come across, the administration, this council, and the mayor fully support us coming up with solutions. This particular bid, no one bid on it, but we feel as though it's a very important area as we take some of our paper forms and put them on the web, as we make the operations of government, rent control, water utility, we bring all these systems together. And so this is an overall request or proposal, so we could move forward on things we've already identified.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, that sounds like a good thing to do. While we're on page five, let us find out what the architectural project management for the various library improvements is, what improvements are being experimented upon the project.
Do you give me the resolution number, because I don't have?
Oh, sorry, 22.
So I kind of follow you. So what?
22.
22? Thank you. 22, he said, he said, he said.
Yes, Council President, primarily three things, painting, replastering, HVAC replacement, and, as I got up, I had to turn the elevator?
Yes, thank you.
Like, right out of my head, I'm stuck. My apologies.
Thank you. Move on to page six, number 35, the health liquor license. I just want to understand that this body's not going to act on that because at least one of you is a member of the elves. So you're going to punt on that decision as an ABC, is that, that's correct?
That's correct, Council President.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that's to avoid conflict of interest. Move on to, oh, I think I already got some answers on the tracer, but I just, I just want to understand that bidding process, were there other bids, or was this the only one they see?
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. They were the only bid, but the bid specs did go out to the other major players in the field, including GovPilot and similar organizations. This system will measure and track the ERUs that our administrator referred to before. It incorporates GIS technology, so we will have a handle on where the hotspots are, and it'll allow us to make the work orders and get the job done in time and fashion.
Thank you very much, that's all on the resolutions.
Any other resolutions? Hi, from the question for Lucy, I just had a follow-up question on 22, the library improvements. I know there was concern previously about lead and asbestos, which is the last term, I want to know, has that been tested already, or is the intention that the architects being hired will themselves be doing the testing before doing the work of the building?
Yeah, we have not tested it, at least for lead, given the age of the building, if it was not lead in there, I would be shocked, to be honest. We, we decided to get expertise in and not try to do things piecely. So they'll, they'll come in, they'll specify what has to be done, what the appropriate steps are, and move from there.
Thank you. I, I just want to clarify, so does that mean that the architects that are being hired to do this work will be testing, so that we know about this, is it asbestos, or?
They will be specifying what the requirements for testing are, and then that will go to contractors who specialize in testing. Now, they may have contractors part of their, 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 their operation, if that is the case, and they, those may be the people who are doing the testing.
Okay, and it's? It's a process, right? Right, I think it, it matters less what exactly is doing the testing, what I really want confirmation of is, can we take this as a guarantee that testing for those two substances will be taking place prior to the active renovations?
Definitely.
Okay, great, I just want to make sure.
Any other, Steven?
More resolutions? Second. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Actually, I'm sorry, yes, with the exception of 19, thank you.
Silly noted. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Luddwitt?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Thank you. So before we go into the comment portion of the meeting, I just wanted to, Mr. De La Cruz, you're hiding there. At the last meeting, we were not able to go ahead, and the initiative of the Department of Community Services, Human Community Services, so I asked if you would just, a, a quote here, for the amazing things that you guys are doing.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So what I've shared with the council is a quick update on our alcohol and community resources. So adjusting the number of quality of life issues in the city through our partnerships with, with groups representing corporate, not-for-profit, faith-based, and governmental sectors, the division continues to strive to improve life for residents and visitors through the following programs. The Homelessness Prevention Roundtable continues to meet on a regular basis. The Mobile Homelessness Outreach Teams, which are deployed twice a week, have since its inception provided the Coming Home Office of Middlesex County with dozens of informational questionnaires, where newly identified homeless are put into the system, and up-to-date information for homeless individuals who may already be in the system is updated. The Department's recurring social service partners breakfast, social service partners resource fair, and department open house events continue to be a success, to a large part to the generosity of Emmanuel Boothroom Church and the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, as these agencies have in fact hosted these events for us. So far this year, the city has experienced nine Code Red events. These are days where the temperatures reach 90 degrees or greater for two consecutive hours. A cooling center has been established at Unity Square, 81 Wemson Avenue, and that operates from 12 noon to 7 p.m., when Code Red has been issued. We continue to partner with the Urban Health Collaborative on Kirkpatrick Street, which opens and maintains a day center regardless of weather, four days a week. We're working with the New Brunswick Parking Authority and United Way of Central Jersey to improve our Make Account program. If you're not familiar, the Make Account program are, is the metering program, where 15 meters are currently in operation in the downtown, and a number of businesses, both returning and new, display Make Account donation materials for patrons. Working with the city's administrator and Middlesex County's Division of Addiction and Mental Health Planning, we're in the final phases of establishing the placement of a Middlesex County healthcare kiosk. If you recall, at the June 5th meeting, the council approved a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the city and the county, so we can place this kiosk, which by the way, comes at no cost to the city. The last item I have regards new initiatives. As I was alluded to earlier, the department has been working with a number of social service providers in the city. What would enhance our coordination of efforts are two ordinances which we would like to propose. One proposal is for ordinance that would require any New Brunswick-based organization providing outreach or direct services, including but not limited to food, clothing, or shelter to homeless or precariously housed individuals or families to actually register with the city. The second proposed ordinance would require any New Brunswick-based agency with access to the homeless management information system, or HIMSS system, to provide the city access to their data. We anticipate working with the administrator and the city attorney on drafting these ordinances in the coming weeks. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding the subduty.
Any questions from the other council members? Thank you. State for just to see if the member of the police have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comments. You have up to five minutes to address the council, one time off. Ask me if I want to respond.
I have to say, as a black resident for 47 years here in New Brunswick, I just have to say, it's very sad, where we have a bunch of dishonest, perfect devils and racists that is running the city of New Brunswick. But one thing I'm surely proving tonight to tell you, I am not a devil, and I am not no criminal, to show you after what I said at the last city council meeting, about each one of these officers, Keith Walcock, badge 265, may the Lord have, let him have his day. Nicholas Defaco, badge 5298, may the Lord let him have his day. Alexander Yunes, badge 326, may the Lord let him have his day. James Hoover, badge 3274, may the Lord let him have his day. Alfie, if I pronounced it right, Martinez, badge 303, may the Lord let him have his day. And like I said, due to where, what? I pray, I'm, I'm, one thing I'm hoping, due to where Suzanne, Councilmember Suzanne Secora, I'm hoping your case comes before mine, because now I have four cases dealing with green lawsuits, due to where, and I'm surely going to use mine, where I see it as racism, due to where New Brunswick Police Department did not put you in handcuffs for drinking and driving, or tested blood, and I'm going to use Christopher Ramirez Rodriguez. Wow, after hitting someone with a pole in the head, smashing someone's windshield, coming towards me, wow, he wasn't put in handcuffs, why, because he's an illegal immigrant? Oh, believe me, I have the evidence, but one thing I have here tonight, it was a blessing, I didn't understand what it was from PSENG. Today's after the meeting, what I said, wow, to show you the Lord blesses me when I said I speak the truth. Wow, $522,33 cents, I didn't know what CR was until I looked at the bottom of the deal that says do not pay, due to where, like I said, what I teach people, you help others, you're helping yourself. And if you look at the last four pages, every sentence I said, wow, I can't afford I can't afford no three hundred dollars a month. Just me and the household paying the rent, one thousand five hundred and fifty, fifty dollars? Wow, and every cent, what? I'm not the devil, some of you need to look at yourselves. And I'm going to get to you, councilmember Escobar, getting back to two thousand twenty-three, the same day, due to where, when you told me where you did not care, and I, I'm very upset with it, due to I told you once before, due to where, why do you act different when you're at a meeting without Suzanne Secora Ludlitt? I'm going to say, due to where, how you disrespected me when you looked at me at the last meeting and said, hmm? When I said, wow, you wouldn't even let me speak on my letter, then you put me out and everything. I'm going to say, councilmember Rebecca Escobar, may you have the worst luck in the world for not caring about others, due to where, stop making excuses for what the police, where their victims are making criminals, and then when somebody's criminal, you're protecting them, what, you put your hand on the Bible to follow the law, not to break the law. And like I said, the next one, due to where, I'm going to, excuse me? Let me speed, speed up so I get everyone's name, name, name in. Due to where, the next one, that would be, Ms. Charlie Danning, may you have the worst luck in the world, due to where, what? I'm tired, due to I didn't appreciate when you had a situation with the judge telling you, telling the justice, where, even though I filed a lawsuit against James, James Holbert, due to where, what, and I called custodian to him, another racist judge. And that, and that James Holbert had his day, may worst luck in the world. And I'm going to say, Judge Phil Bro, may you have the worst luck in the world. And like I said, to you, to TK Shami, may you feel the pain that I'm going through, the reason why I have a sling on my arm now, due to where, what? I told you I have to keep going back and forth, due to where, what? My arms swelled up so bad last Tuesday, due to where, what? With the nerve pinching, where I couldn't even hold my damn hand. Either way, like I said, what, with the sling on, it helps with the nerve pain, but it still reverses the other way around. Like I said, oh, I'm ready for New Brunswick Police Department. And like I said, I wasn't joking to someone on, where so many people thought me on, 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 I'm, anyone, fifteen hundred dollars cash for the whole entire video. And what am I paying fifteen hundred dollars cash for? Because like I said, I've been paying for evidence, disorderly conduct is only five hundred dollars. But I'm ready for your court, based on all of you, because I have the evidence.
Anybody else from the phone, please, to address the council?
Yes, please, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I want to start by saying thank you to everybody who was responsible for the Juneteenth parade and festival. It was an honor and a privilege to get to, to be a part of that. And thank you to Cheryl for getting on the microphone at the last meeting and inviting folks and making folks feel welcome to join. So I, I, I for one did, I did. It's a great tradition in, in my neighborhood that I'm really proud of. Any department heads that have retired or put in retirement papers? I know this is, you know, the middle of the year, the start of the fiscal year. Any, any retirements in the cabinet?
Does that have any provisions, please?
No, that, okay. I, I did read a Tap into article that seemed to suggest that Robert Walls is approaching a mandatory retirement. Is that, is that the case? Is he going to have to, going to have to leave when he turns seventy, or is that?
Mr. Drew, so you know that? You should call Tap, call the fire director, that way you can ask him, because I don't. Ask him.
Okay, sure, good idea.
There are, there are laws that call for mandatory retirement for PFRS members. I'm not sure it's specific.
Yeah, so he might be able to be more specific, we'll know.
Okay, I'm really disappointed that this didn't come up at the meeting, but, you know, water utility customers will receive the annual water quality report for two thousand twenty-four, and there's a slew of violations here. Reporting violations in two thousand twenty-three for various contaminants, ethylene dibromide, dibromo chloropropene, two four D, parentheses herbicide, trichloropropene, and also regulated PFOS contaminants. I know we had already previously discussed some of the, you know, testing companies and the, the screw-ups that led to, to testing not being done or reporting not being done timely, you know, at previous council meetings. But I'm, I'm also learning from this report that, quote, "New Brunswick received a notice of non-compliance from the New Jersey DEP in January two thousand twenty-four for failure to submit their lead service line replacement plan to the Bureau. New Brunswick submitted the LSLR plan to the EP on May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. In order to avoid these types of violations in the future, a dedicated person will be assigned to the task of tracking and reporting required documents." As you know, I did try to ask about this stuff at the last meeting. It was told to have to wait till the end of the meeting. And, you know, tried to get more information through these meetings about it and haven't really gotten much luck. So I was disappointed to see, not only did this arrive in our mailboxes a few days after the last meeting, but you didn't even think it was important enough to include it in any of the information you shared with the public today. I would like to hear answers as to how these violations happened, especially considering you have the congressman here doing a big celebration about, you know, getting lead out of the water, getting the, the lead service lines replaced. How do you have that happen late last year, but forget to file the lead service line replacement plan to the, to the DEP? That just doesn't square. Can, can I hear some answers?
I think we're ready to ask those questions, but please, so I'll, I'll voice that at the next meeting myself.
I'm glad Mr. Cradville recognized, he brought some great information amongst all.
That's very, yeah.
And state leaders and our actual model community for lead remediation. And so, so yes, that, that is the case. But I'd be glad to, to make sure whatever information we do.
I think we will have some.
I would, I would think a model involved coming up with the required plans and submitting them timely, embarrassing that didn't happen. May I ask, who is the person who is now dedicated to ensure this doesn't happen in the future?
I have the question right here, Mr. Cradville, go ahead.
Okay, I'll also note the notices that you can contact the water utility, seven three two four one eight fifty-six eighty-seven, extension one one zero. And I did leave a message on that line earlier today. And so I'm looking forward to getting a call back and being able to get some more information about these disturbing violations. I think it's something that, that New Brunswick has actually a terrible track record of, and we just have to look back to two thousand thirteen when it was actually criminal. So I don't want us to, to, to go down that path again. I want, you know, transparency and compliance with the state laws. It's also a time of year when we get a lot of fireworks. So in my neighborhood, we incurred our first one today at four thirty-nine PM. I don't know why people are playing fireworks in the day. I'll note at the July sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, councilwoman Scored Ludlitt, you said, quote, "The fireworks situation in town has gotten completely out of control." You said, quote, "I'm going to be working on ordinance to try to rectify the situation." But please know we're aware of what's going on about that. That was now almost two years ago. I all recall any such ordinance being introduced. Can you tell us what the update is?
Thank you for the update. I have the updates the next meeting. For the chair. Thank you. Anybody else need forward those?
Hi, Emily Claflin, for Lucy and Steve. First off, I want to say thank you for the great update on the excellent work on homelessness prevention and other services. It's always good to have a more thorough time for updates. And I can also value the publicity of what the offices, the department is asking the council for, because that shows us a little bit more about what the department is actively thinking about and, you know, plans for the future and ahead of things. So I appreciate that as well. There was a mention of how many code reds have taken place so far this season. I was wondering if there's any update with regards to air quality and, you know, services that provides on that air quality dates. I know we have a plan that the city will ask you, so.
Mr. Nelson stepped out for a moment, he's coming back.
So when he comes back, you can ask that question again.
Okay. I had another question also, please, but please not, you're all, all waiting to. I was wondering also if there are any other updates planned by city departments for future needs?
As, as we go, yes? As we go, we continue with the storm, more, you know, utility, what we're doing now, and we continue to move forward, yeah.
Okay, great. And I, I imagine, you know, as part of those more thorough updates from various city departments, it may be helpful to have some one talk at greater length about water quality issues that we are having here in New Brunswick and certainly, you know, curating about violations of PFOS is something that is particularly concerning to me, knowing the health impacts that that has for the population, so.
I think that, yeah, I think it's great, I, I am very confident about our water department and the staff. So I'm pretty sure they will be more than happy for that, I would have an update on that. And if needed, if I think it's needed, I'm pretty sure they will do a, a very good job and give it an excellent.
I'm sure they can do, I would love to hear it. I would love to actually hear that, because I think there's surely a lot of good things that are happening, and, and I, I know that there is often focus on a lot of the problems, as there actually would be. But this is an opportunity for the various city departments to showcase what good they are doing to people who may not already see that work that's happening behind the scenes. So I would love for some more insight on some of the problems that were mentioned, but I'm sure there's a lot of good that would also benefit from that. So moving. I don't know if you guys are always back yet, the, if the case is not back before I finish. But the other question I was hoping to get more insight on is if we could speak more about what the department is doing or may seek to do in the future with regards to dealing with the drug crisis in New Brunswick. I know there was one mention of the health kiosk and how that relates to mental health and addiction services. I imagine there probably is more discussion of what more can be done in addition to having a kiosk, so I would love to hear more about that, even though it's not work that's actively ongoing, or there's work that is in the plans or in discussion and that's fairly bold for the public to know. So I'll pose that question to a little later, I would appreciate that. And then I wanted to briefly check in on, is there an update on the George Street plans? Are there opportunities for the public to weigh in on that currently?
Not yet, as soon as, that's the one that I really, I can track. So as long as there's something new to say, I will make sure that is reported here.
Okay.
Thank you. Something that you just mentioned, I must remember, and I'm, I'm going to get more information, but I know that the Minnesota Council Office with the police and others, I will do like a, a, it's a community resource fair on one of the parks. They're going to give you information about recovery centers, you know, some of the resources in the community that those who have addiction challenges can utilize. And I think it's July twelfth, if I recall correctly, but I will get that information. It's, it's right here, um, one of these, what is the, the part right?
Pittman Park?
Mister?
Pittman Park?
Pittman Park, yes.
July tenth?
July tenth, thank you, Captain, July tenth. So there's, that's the good initiative that is happening. So I think that, that is also, you know, things that we're doing, right? And education and trying to get the help, you could offer, but they have to make that decision. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Okay, say nobody else?
No. No more? I'm sorry, you have a second?
No.
No, we have somebody else.
Oh, okay. So it's that he was spoken slowly, no?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Pedro Ramirez, reporter for New Brunswick Today. I wanted to start off by thanking Leslie, the clerk. I think it's pretty, pretty accessible when making offer requests. There's new law passing now. But I wanted to highlight that New Brunswick makes it really easy when one makes a request. We do receive a response in a timely manner. And the fact that the videos are made available through email, instead of going in, paying, having a DVD or a CD like other townships or on a USB drive, it makes it much complicated. But I think New Brunswick has that process that makes it really accessible. So I wanted to give the city a shout-out for having that system. And the other question was, what's the rules with the type of protection items, self-defense items, that one can bring in this city hall? There is getting rules posted, like pepper spray, taser guns, I know some items are illegal. But I'm at other meetings, other city council meetings, where you have to go to metal detectors. If you're part of the media, they make you show your ID, go through your bags, equipment. So is there any type of ruling policy in that, in here? Or it's open doors, what's situation?
Right now, we're having a housing, we have talks, because the world is changing, right? And this thing is happening, so we have a, informally, we have, have some talks. But you bring up two points, right? It's something that we have to keep in mind, and I'm pretty sure that, that is something that we will be, to continue to have that discussion, especially with the police, with attorney, and the staff, what would be the best way to ensure the safety of not only of us, but the public also while we're here? Because like I said, the world is changing, there's so many things going on. But right now, we have, we have our officers and a little more.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty great. I find it safe that we have officers here, I think every city council has one. I guess recently I saw footage of a shooting inside a library, I believe it's an old footage. But it brought many questions about the security, not only in government buildings, but open spaces to the general public, you know, where there's no metal detectors, you can walk in freely and walk right out of the store. You know, many of these places have, you know, children and many important officials and members involved in different types of fields. So I feel like, you know, that type of security kind of helps having it in place because of certain reasons that happen. So I feel like council should consider having something similar like that. And for those that do have their devices to protect themselves, there should be some type of cubicle or safe spot to put them in there to enter the facilities. Because sometimes, you know, you do have to walk out back into these streets and you don't have a car, or you take public transportation to attend these meetings. I feel like to facilitate something to hold belongings that are not permitted would be acceptable as well, if that's something worth, worth considering. So thank you, happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Anybody else? Would you like to say motion?
Motion. Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin, there. Councilmember Secora Ludlitt.
Yes.
Council vice president Anderson.
Yes.
Council president Escobar.
Yes.